Alright, so then our next agenda item would be to review the pre-concept application that was submitted by Jeff Thomas to expand the existing Altamont Corners. So I don't, do we have Jeff or anybody on?
I'm here Deb, Don Cropsey, speaking on behalf of Jeff Thomas.
Okay. Alright, Don, you want to give us a quick overview of, you know, what the plan is? And, you know, I think one question that I have right off the bat is who the players are? And I'm sure you can explain that. It seems a little muddled as far as, you know, one of the renditions says proposed addition to Altamont Corners for Curry Pata, and yet the application is from Jeff, so I'm a little confused as to who who in this whole thing.
Well, right, and as you know, Jeff Thomas owns the Altamont Corners, and he's owned it for approximately fifteen to seventeen years, I forget which date he bought it. And he is proposing to add in addition to the, I want to say, the east side of the plaza, there will be a, it's proposed to build a fourteen hundred and seventy square foot enclosed portion of the building, and off the front of that, which would face the Route 146 side, an open deck, and then in front of that, as part of the landscaping, there would be a small patio out in front with a fireplace. You know, it'd be a gas fireplace. And his intention is to lease the space to the owners of the restaurant that you just discussed, and that would allow them to expand the seating capacity of their restaurant, and, you know, provide an outdoor area for the summer months and early spring and fall, when the weather's right, for outdoor eating. The plaza, he's, he's pretty much not maxed out, but he has a parking lot in the rear, which has approximately twenty-two spaces, parking lot in the front that has twenty-two spaces, and that would serve the plaza as well as this new addition. So Jeff will own this building, and again, he's going to, the proposal is to lease it to the the new restaurant tenant that you just approved.
Okay. So he's going, so I guess first, he wouldn't be, I don't believe, would be required for a new special amendment to his existing special use permit.
I believe that's correct. I mean, he's, he's received approvals, a number of approvals throughout the years for the use of the plaza for multiple tenants, that was when he first bought it. And then subsequent to that, each of the existing tenants, with the exception of Paizan's Pizza, has come in for new special use permits. There was one for martial arts, there was one for Subway, there was one for, I forget the name of the Chinese restaurant next door to the new one.
Campbell Garden?
Yeah, that, so the board has issued special use permits for each of those tenants, and, you know, on top of the one that Jeff received when he bought it for, to break the building up into a multi-tenant building.
So he, yeah, so, but now that he's adding to the building, it's not just creating existing space, you know, that, that I believe is the reason he has to apply for amendments to the existing special use permit.
Yes, well, he's adding, he's adding a fourteen hundred and seventy square foot addition and a deck. So, you know, that, that will built on that one side of the building. So yes, he definitely needs a special use permit. And the reason we're here tonight is to discuss the, that whole proposal and the various items that the board might want to look at during the special use permit review. This is a pre-application meeting to discuss, you know, the concerns and how the building's going to look, how it'll fit into the community, et cetera.
Okay. You know, I have a few questions, but I'll allow, you know, the board to go first. I'm sure we all have some questions, so John, want to go first?
Yeah, just I think pertains to Allison, or I want to ask Allison. In our zoning, it says zero lot lines are permitted outside setbacks, but where the side yard provided, where there is a side yard provided, it has to be a minimum of twelve feet. Now, looking at their drawing, they've got a side yard back in the enclosed building and for half of the new deck. How, do they need a zoning hearing for setback, or? The way I read this zoning, they, they can't do that.
You mean this new patio section?
Well, since, I wrote down what's, zero lot lines are permitted except where there is a side yard, and if there's a side yard, it has to be a minimum of ten feet, or twelve feet. In the back of the building, Phase Two, there is a side yard, they're definitely, all the way up to most of where the new deck is. The way I read this zoning, if they can't reach the twelve feet, then they're going to have to go for
You're saying that, the way that you're reading the code, they have to go for a variance to the side setback?
If the way I read this is correct, Allison, yes.
No, that was Deb. Well, I, you know, that was one of my questions too, John, but my question was more geared towards CFS, CSX, the railroad. I'm not sure how close to the track that is going to be closest, it would probably be the patio, what would be closest, I couldn't tell by the condition. Don, has anybody spoken with CSX about this?
We have not spoken to CSX, but I was out, I've been out to the site a number of times, and I would estimate, and I couldn't find, I didn't know exactly where the property line is, but the main track that runs down there, the property line's probably thirty feet, thirty to forty feet from the property line, I'm guessing, I did just by eye. So, the, the actual rail lines, the railroad where the trains go, is probably thirty to forty feet from the property line.
No way. No.
Lance, you had, you had some input on that when we discussed it. You had some experience with CSX from Voorheesville, right?
Yeah, we built a a train observation deck, and in discussion with CSX, if I remember right, they, they own fifty feet both sides of the track, right away. We went through this with the rail trail, you know, but considering the kind of train traffic that you get, you know, I'm sure that Don or Jeff could reach out to CSX, and that will answer that question.
We don't have any problem to reach out with CSX to find out if they have any specific setback requirements to structures or patios or decks to the rail line. We can, we can check that out.
Yeah, because you don't have a lot of train traffic there, and it's very slow. Where down
I don't think that matters though Lance.
Very fast, yeah.
It doesn't matter whether it's slow or fast, or you have a lot of it, or not a lot of it, you know, we have to make sure that we're in compliance with what they need, as well as, like John said, what we need. I read our code as well, and yeah, it's a little convoluted saying that you can have a zero foot side setback unless there is a side yard.
Yeah, it's, it's hard, and it's, it's
But we do have a zero setback, so but if you look, if you look at the deck, the deck is setback zero feet from the property line. So our setback is zero. And one of the, one of the things that was contemplated during the master plan was to allow zero setbacks, so that, because there's a lot of smaller lots, and allow better use of buildings on properties for the commercial districts, in the central business district. So, but we do have a zero setback to the deck, and obviously, it does go straight back, and the property line is angled. So, the rear portion, yeah, there's part of, part of it is more than zero, but the front portion of this addition, which is the deck, is zero, it's a zero setback.
Off the top of my head, I mean, there's nothing in your code where you get any kind of bonus for providing a side yard that, you know, the applicant would have gotten the advantage of in an original site plan that had a yard in this area that's now proposed to be developed. That's right, right Lance?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so we're mending the existing site plan special use permit and eliminating, you know, what was a side yard. You know, I don't know that, you know, it triggers the need for any kind of variance, because, I mean, this language is not entirely clear, but it seems to me that, you know, it's saying that you can, you don't have to have a side yard, it can be a zero setback, but where a side yard is provided, it has to be a minimum of twelve point five feet. It's definitely twenty feet. It's kind of peculiar language.
So you're saying, don't go by what our code says?
No, I mean, I would say
I mean, if it's wrong, we should, we should change it, but
Well, it's not that it's wrong, I'm saying, it appears as though he's in compliance with it, that he doesn't need any kind of variance.
So in the back, you're saying that's not a side yard, and Phase Two, by the enclosed restaurant, I see a lot of space here, you're not calling that a side yard?
Yeah, but John, what the code says is that you can have a setback, and the proposal before you shows a zero setback.
In the front?
Well, there's a zero setback to that portion of the building, that's right.
What about the other parts? What about the other two structures, the new deck and the enclosed restaurant?
Well, the new, the new deck is a zero setback. I mean, if, if we need to apply for a variance, we certainly can apply for a variance, but I don't think that's the intent of the code. I think the intent of the code is to allow development in the central business district without a setback, so that you can provide space in the districts. Like I said, a lot of the lots are small, and most, a lot of the properties don't have setbacks, they have one, two, five, five-foot setbacks.
I, Don, I agree with what you're saying, but I don't agree with what we're saying versus what our code says.
Well, like I said, if we need to apply for a variance, we can apply for it, if that's, I mean, I would defer to Allison on whether or not one would be needed. If one's needed, that's, that's, we can certainly provide the necessary data to, to to grant, for the board to consider for the granting of a variance.
You know, I think, you know, we should take some time, and I think, you know, ultimately Lance has to take a look at this, you know, and determine, you know, I, it, I mean, I see that, you know, the front of the building, it's on the property line, but I mean, as you said before, I mean, this, it goes at an angle, you know, I don't know that you could call this area between, you know, the Phase Two bar dining area and the property line a side yard. I mean, to me, it just kind of looks like the natural effect of it being at a diagonal, and, you know, the building being perpendicular to the, to the, you know, the frontage on the road. But I think that, you know, this may have to be a call that Lance has to make to interpret the language of our code and determine, you know, does it meet the requirement, or would it trigger the need for a variance? And if it does, it's an area variance, it's, you know, it's something that, you know, it's, you know, it's a balancing analysis, and, and, you know, just by the looks of it, I mean, I think it would be a pretty minimum variance that we're talking about. But that's something maybe, you know, Lance, you and I can talk about a little bit more, you know, and discuss whether the village has any prior precedent interpreting that language.
Hey, Danny.
Yeah.
Would Jeff be willing to shoot the site, put the pins in?
Sure, it's not, not a problem, we could, we could do that, for sure.
Then we know what we're working with, you know?
I think it's, it's already, it's already been surveyed, and there are, there is back corner pins, I believe it's already done. Just have to locate them.
Alright, fantastic.
Now, we do have the advantage of having our zoning board chair honestly. Danny, I don't know if you want to say anything about, I mean, I know you and I had a little discussion about variances. Do you have anything you want to say here?
As Allison and John were going back and forth discussing that, I was looking at it, and it says zero lot lines are permitted where a side yard is provided, meaning if they're providing a side yard, then it would meet minimum distances or setbacks. Doesn't mean that they have to. So that structure that they put in there, the way I'm looking at it, off the top of my head, is that they can put the structure right up to the property line.
What about parking spaces?
That's a whole different story.
Yeah, that's, I know, that, well, okay, so
I counted, I apologize Deb, I counted about forty-five seats or seating opportunities, and I come up with fifteen parking spaces that would be required in addition. Three of those, that twenty percent, you know, municipal, so it comes up to twelve parking spaces. I don't know what the other stores, the history on that, and how many spaces they each required, and I didn't know how many parking spaces are total around back and front, and then how many handicaps would be required.
I think the total existing is forty-four.
Forty-four.
So, but, you know, you know, I guess, I just want to make sure we closed one area so that, you know, I don't want to send Don away with a question in his mind. So you're, Allison and Lance are going to get together and determine whether or not, you know, they're meeting our code, and whether there's any precedence for the side setback situation, right?
Right, so I'm going to wait to hear from Lance on that, and that'll, that'll dictate how we make the application, whether it's just a straight special use permit site plan application, or we'll need a variance as well. On the, on that side yard setback question.
I just didn't want to leave that hanging, you know, having not been able to go where you were going with that, but now we can, I mean, parking, that was a question I had. Barb, you had started the question on parking, is that you that said that? You're on you.
I think it was Judith's fire's ten.
It's me, Deb.
Okay, hang on a second, hang on one second. Yeah, so you had a question, I had a question on parking as well, that's, okay, Judy, Jimmy, right? Just let me, I got to say something here then. This is just a pre-concept hearing, normally, we don't allow public comments, but
Deb, I thought I was muted, I didn't know I wasn't.
That's okay. As a chair, I believe I have the right to allow questions from the public. So, I will do that, I will allow questions from the public, because I think it's a good idea to get everything out there to the applicant now, instead of having them come back a dozen times, you know, different questions that they could have answered initially. But yeah, as far as parking is concerned, you know, it looks like the expansion in the front of the new building will take away some, from some parking. Don, how many spaces will that take away, has that been determined, I couldn't tell from this?
The, the addition, the enclosed addition, deck, and the patio does not encroach on any of the existing parking.
How is that, oh, so that's just going to be on the side?
That's correct. If you look at the
Parking lot, I think.
See where the new patio is, on the plan? The parking space to the right of that, and then just below it, that's a parking space, that's the exist, that's the existing sidewalk.
Alright, so that's the, that's the existing sidewalk.
That's correct, so no parking spaces are, are going to be eliminated as part of this construction.
That's just going to be opposite of what?
Is there a scale on this chart, a scale of distance?
Three sixteenths equals one, one foot. Three sixteenths of an inch to one foot.
Three sixteenths.
That's on the, the rendering and the site plan that was, or the floor plan that was submitted.
And, so what is the, do you know what the distance is between the property line and the center line of the tracks? Or you, you, previously you said you didn't.
I, I don't know for sure. I can't definitively say what that distance is. I can, I'm going to find that out, though, I will.
Okay, so we have fourteen hundred and seventy square feet, not including the patio, of new roof area.
That's correct, that's correct.
And is there any provision for the increase of, of an impervious surface?
Well, right now, currently, the parking lot drainage and roof drainage sheet drains to 146 and into the state system, and at the rear, the drainage sheds to the, in an easterly direction into the wooded area, and ultimately makes its way to, there's a little creek back there, I, I don't know if there's a name to it, but it does
There is, but
It makes it way, makes its way into that creek, so
But, but we're taking out fourteen hundred and seventy square feet, plus whatever the area of the patio is, of, of vegetated cover.
That's right, it's, it's a lawn, lawn area, yep.
So, so then, there, that area is no longer going to be serving the function of soil recharge.
That is correct.
And there is nothing being done to mitigate that.
Not, not, no, we, we have not done anything to address that. I mean, that's, that's, that's one of the things we can, we can address when we make our formal application.
Well, that, I mean, I, I just, this will certainly need a seeker, I think. So that would probably be one of the issues addressed in the future.
Right, we'll, we'll be submitting a seeker form for an unlisted action as part of the application, and we'll address the, the questions on the seeker form.
Evan, I'd like to ask Lance a question.
I'm here.
Lance, you're going to check the previous history about the other special use permits for this building, and what was required for parking. Did you attempt to do that?
Sure. I just had the folder out last week, so it's very lengthy.
It is, I was there with him.
Because, you know, I'm just thinking, and Allison, this goes back to what we were talking about, to the special use permit we just left, we can't worry about we can't, it's not up to us to worry, think about the COVID requirements as far as spacing. So I want to find out how many spaces, or how many tables were originally submitted for the pizza place and for the Chinese restaurant, not so much what they have now, because when I was looking in there, you know, the the Chinese places ask seating for eight, and Paizanos has seating for twelve. But, you know, you can see all the tables stacked up, and the chairs stacked up, I want to see what originally was, we have to come up with parking, and the only way we can do it is see what was in previous special use permits required and what was approved.
That's right.
I think they have that for the next meeting.
Right, and you have to look at, you know, what they would be able to have with, you know, their maximum permitted occupancy, because you know, assuming that, you know, these, you know, these COVID restrictions go away at some point, you want to look at the parking for the whole plaza based on, you know, the maximum that you're now permitting at, at the new Curry Pata, and also the maximum amount of seats that they could have at Paizan's and, and the other restaurants.
So, Don, the other thing we spoke about at the briefly at the last meeting was handicap parking spots, and I feel they need more than one parking, handicap.
Right, I, we looked at that, that issue in the field, and there is, we can create additional handicap parking spots, we can create some in the rear. There is a deck along the back of the property, and on the 156 side, the parking spots near 156 could be converted to accessible parking spots, and still provide an accessible route to the entrance, to the rear entrance to this addition, as well as, you know, any other entrance that needed to be accessible from, from the back. Because there is no designated handicap parking spot in the back. I think there's one in the front, so
There is one in front near Paizan.
Right.
So that, you know, if you were to create a second one, you know, along the back, obviously, you can't, you know, the NDA says you can't, you know, force the person into traffic or in any dangerous situation, so, you know, there is, there would be an ingress, an ingress to the restaurant in the back.
If you look at the, the plan that was submitted, and this is, you know, this is a, an initial plan, it'll be
I see the door.
Modified as we go, but there is a doorway, there's a doorway that goes to the basement, and there is a doorway that goes to the rear of, you know, to the backyard. And that deck that you see behind kitchen, that would, that, that would need to be expanded to accommodate that door opening, that exit. And that, that deck area is the deck area that would provide the accessible route from a parking space. So the grade drops, it's, it's probably four feet to grade to the parking lot from that door.
So the deck would provide the, the entrance to the restaurant?
No, 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 the, I'm, I'm talking about in the back of the building.
Yep, I'm looking at it.
Okay, that, that deck behind the, the kitchen, that would need to be expanded to accommodate that doorway. It'd just come down a little, five or six more feet, so that
How far off the ground is that deck?
It's about four feet at that end of the building.
So how are you going to get, I mean, will that be a ramp, or?
No, as I said, that deck runs the entire length of the rear of the building, and as you get to Route 156, where you, you know, you enter the highway system, it's grade level. So you, you could, you could walk, you know, you could, if you were using a wheelchair, you could go from the accessible parking spot onto the deck down by 156, and wheel along that deck to the rear entrance, or you could, you could come in the front way.
You'll need another one in the front, I think, Don.
So the, the, the access, you mean another parking spot?
Another handicap parking spot.
Okay, we can consider that, sure.
I have some concerns about the handicap parking in the rear of the building. Who is responsible for plowing that lot?
The plaza owner plows it.
He does.
He does.
Because it looks kind of rough back there, and it's, I just am concerned with the ice and the snow, and will that ramp be shoveled?
Absolutely, it definitely would be shoveled. I mean, I think it's shoveled currently, because that, that, that's the way that deliveries are made in the rear, employees go in the rear. So yeah, that's all maintained during the winter.
I, I think I agree with John, though, I think that it would be remenable to have a handicap parking space in the front of the building.
If they put one in the front, you know, they would have obviously two options, they, they could co-join the one that's already there, and share the eight-foot striped area to allow, you know, a person to get in or out. If, if we said, no, you know, really, we need one on the, I'm just going to use this because it's your Curry Uh, if, if we said, no, you know, really we need one on the, I'm just gonna use this because it's your Curry Pata side, then, you know, that, that would involve a lot more. They'd have to eliminate the stairs. They'd have to put another parking space. They'd have to put a, a ramp there. So, you know, again, this is just pre-concept. So, um, but it's a good, good time to get everything out and reopened.
Sure. I mean, it's, that's, that's why we're here. We wanna get all the issues, uh, that we need to address.
Danny? I guess I know I'm in the dark. I can't help it. I don't know what's wrong.
If I might, uh, in an emergency, uh, is there provisions for anybody who would be on that deck to exit, uh, without having to go inside of a building?
Yes, there is.
Handicap?
Uh.
Well, that was my question, Danny. That's why I wanted to know how far off the ground everything that's that was.
Well, the deck and the new addition is same, has the same floor elevation of the existing plaza.
Yeah, but from the deck to the parking, front, front parking lot?
Uh, no, you'd have to go into the building at this stage.
So I'd be concerned or just, uh, would like to know what the code is on that?
Now, can I ask you a question of Don? What you just said, I'm looking at the new patio, Don. Isn't there a door going out into the sidewalk off the new patio?
The, the patio is at the parking lot level.
Yep.
Where it says new patio. That's at parking lot level.
And there's a door going out from there?
There's, that's all open. There's no door. Uh. It does, it, it's, that's probably a gate, John.
Oh, okay.
My guess is that's a gate. But that's all at parking lot level. It does show.
Access, so, uh, Danny, unless my mind playing tricks and it doesn't every once in a while. Dan, didn't you ask if there was an exit off the new patio?
No.
I think he was talking about the building.
No, not the patio, but the deck because there's some stairs. There's some staircase.
The stairs going down to the new patio. You don't have to go inside, do you? Doesn't the stairs go down from the new deck to the patio and then out?
Yeah, Danny's talking about from the deck in the back.
No?
He's talking about two different things. Danny's talking about the deck in back, which is my question. Um, and that, you know, the height of the deck for a handicap person, you know, in any event of an emergency. John's talking about the front patio, which I believe there is no door. It's all si- it's all parking lot level and sidewalk that would lead to that. There's a gate. I don't think you'd have to go in or out of the, the restaurant. Um, it would be open, just kinda like it is at Veronica's, I believe, right now.
Let me clarify. I was talking about the deck toward the front, right off the patio, cause it's not on the same level. There are steps there?
That's correct, Danny. That deck is the same level as the dining room floor, as the existing plaza. That plaza, if you go into the new, uh, restaurant, um, that deck is at the same floor level.
So my concern is, uh, provisions, you know, like put it so that you can work on it from that deck to the patio handicap accessible.
Well, you, and if you wanted to get to the parking lot, if you were using a wheelchair, you would have to go through the dining room. But under the building code, um, there is, uh, provisions that, um, you could look at and consider the deck an area of refuge. Um, if there was a fire inside the building. So you could maintain yourself on the deck as an area of refuge.
And so from the deck down to the patio, it would.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't go anywhere. You would stay on the deck until help arrived.
Okay.
So for John, John's question still exists. I mean, I get, I got what you were saying about the deck, but John's asking about the patio. The patio, John, i- is sidewalk level. I don't.
Right. Yeah, I understand that.
Parking lot level.
Yeah, I have no questions on that now.
Oh, okay. All right.
This is Dan. I have two questions or comments. Um, Don, the parking in the back of the building, the space closest to one fifty-six?
Yes.
The, I know, I know this is preliminary plan, but the space, the parking space should be within the prod, the site, not overlapping the state right away?
Uh, I don't, uh, let me just look here.
I mean, it might be close, but.
I see. I think it's striped like that.
Yeah, but make sure that the space is completely within the site and also that it doesn't obscure any site distance from anybody pulling out of the parking lot onto one forty, one fifty-six.
Right. Those, those, those spots are all existing.
Okay.
Just for the record, they're all, all existing parking spots.
All right. The other thing is, um, when you talk to CSX, uh, if there's a need for any temporary use of CSX property to build or maintain your addition, this addition, um, you should note whether you need approval from them for temporary use.
I will. I will do that.
Cause I don't know how you build this without going off the property.
Yeah, you're right on the, right on the line.
Yeah. So.
Okay.
That's all I had.
If we could go back to the parking, uh, for a minute, um, you know, if you look at the zoning law, the, the zoning law lists a number of different business uses. It does not, however, list a, a, a parking regulation for a multi-tenant building such as this, where you have a restaurant, you have a martial arts studio, you have another restaurant. And I would ask the board to consider, uh, the section of the ordinance that, um, allows the board to come up with parking regulations for uses not specifically listed in the zoning law. Um, if you, if you look, you know, the pizza place is probably not open at night, doesn't get a lot of business. Curry Pata might have more business. The martial, martial arts studio is not open during the day. So there's, there's, um, uses that overlap and they don't use the parking at the same time. So I would ask the board to give some consideration to utilizing that particular section of the ordinance to come up with some reasonable number for, uh, the plaza. As you know, this plaza has got the most parking spaces of any property in the village. Um, and it, it does have the ability to use the municipal lots as well. So I just, I just throw that out there because there is no specific, uh, parking reg for a multi-tenant building.
I'm just taking a note.
Now, again, let me give you the section of that. That would be, uh, three fifty-five twenty-two, uh, D, two. That's the section of the ordinance that, uh, I'm looking at. And it does say you can use, you can use the, uh, the, the business uses as a guide in coming up with a number, a total number for the plaza.
Yeah. Hey, um, you know, uh, I don't know if you would know this like right now, but, um, are there any plans for like live music or anything like that at, at any point in time? Because, you know, you know, I, I know that you're saying it's not near any type of community, uh, space, but it is. It, it's near the library, which is used for a lot of children's functions. It's near Orkney Park, which we have the, the concerts in the park every Monday in summer. So it's just a consideration if there's going to be, you know, a lot of activity around there, especially I think when the library is concerned and children are around. Um, may not happen in the evening, but, you know, it's just, just something, I don't know if you've thought that far ahead or.
Uh, I, I have not had any discussions with Mr. Thomas regarding that. Um, I, I don't know the answer to that question, but I will, I can, I can ask it.
You know, it's just a consideration if, if they are thinking about live music or, you know, I, I think one of the other things that when people heard about this, it's to a person. I've had people come up to me and say, what is this? I've heard about a cigar bar. And, um, that's the one, everybody's like, oh, I, you know, this is one thing, but a cigar bar? No way. It's near this, it's near that and blah, blah, blah. What? Cigar bar, belly dancing? What is the truth behind that? Because that is running like a wildfire through the building.
I have not, I have not heard either of those two uses. But I can, I can certainly bring that up to Jeff. Let me make a note of that.
I don't know. Uh, you know, I think it was one of the, um, I, I, I think it was Spectrum News had, had an interview with Nadia and, and I think she mentioned it in one of those interviews. So I don't know, but like I said, everybody's coming up to me saying, not what do I hear about this restaurant? Why do I hear about this cigar bar? And I'm like, it's, we don't know anything yet, you know?
Okay. Well, I, I, as I said, I have not heard of either of those two, uh, types of activities.
I will say, I did see the Spectrum news report on it over the weekend where I, I kinda took a double take and I recognized Nadia in the Spectrum report. So it was, and they did, I don't remember, I think they definitely mentioned, you know, potentially belly dancing, but I don't remember if they did anything about this cigar bar.
Okay. Well, all right. I'll, uh,
I mean.
Noted. I will, uh, check it.
I'm having visions that, you know, give nightmares to you. So, yeah, I just.
Can I have a question of Nadia? Or I'm sorry, Allison?
Yeah.
Allison, can we, you know, if we approve this when it comes at the next meeting, can we make a stipulation, any live music has to come back for a special use permit? Cause it's a change in what we approved?
That's a good question.
Difference if they had live music out on the deck or on the patio. Uh, I mean, I don't envision that. And if that's what they eventually wanna do and, uh, it should be noted or they should have to come back, cause that can affect the surrounding area.
I agree with that. I mean, uh, you know, a live music venue kind of introduces different potential impacts, especially with regard to noise or outdoor lighting that, you know, typically you wouldn't have with, you know, a, a restaurant with an outdoor seating space.
Right.
Um, so I think, you know, our approval has to be based on what the applicant is proposing as far as, you know, how this addition is gonna be used. The plans we have before us show that it's an expansion of an existing restaurant space. Um, you know, unless the applicant tells us that, you know, they're also proposing, you know, to have live music and that would be, you know, they would specify it's indoor, it's outdoor, so we could review the potential impacts of that use. Then I think that, you know, our approval should be limited to, um, you know, an expansion of the plaza, um, you know, an expansion of this existing restaurant space. Um, and we could put conditions on it that, you know, use for, as a live music venue, because it wasn't proposed as part of the application and so we didn't review it, would have to come back before the planning board.
Okay, good. Thank you, Allison.
But Allison, if the application did come in with, uh, a music component, that, that would be something that would be incorporated into a special use permit, correct?
We would then review it. It would be part of our review. We would be reviewing for potential noise impacts associated with music. It's, it's what the applicant's representing, um, you know, they're applying for.
Exactly. Yep. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, again, I, I think, you know, going back in my mind on a seeker, you know, I think noise, uh, is certainly one consideration, uh, for an listed action.
Definitely.
So if, you know, if we, uh, if we did have, uh, live music venue, um, you know, that, that would actually be considered as part of the seeker as well as part of the special use permit.
Yes.
Allison, another question. We just approved Nadia's request for a restaurant. Now, my understanding, this is part of her, gonna be part of her restaurant, this addition. So would she, she have to come back with a, an amendment to her application then, would she not?
Right.
For live music?
Well, yes, yes. Because we had said to Nadia, you know, we couldn't grant her a special use permit for a restaurant in this expanded space where the plaza had not yet applied for a modification to its existing site plan and special use permit. So essentially, you know, the plaza is gonna be applying for the approvals necessary to make this addition to their structure. And then, you know, it's, you know, once that's approved, it's going to be able to, you know, kind of run with the land where, you know, if, if Nadia, you know, has a, a set term on her lease, if that lease term is up, they're gonna be able to lease this to another restaurant space. Um, but because her special use permit, all she could apply for right now was this use permit for the existing, you know, kinda subway restaurant and the amount of seating that that permit, you know, that's all we could review at this point in time because the plaza isn't approved for any modification yet.
I'm confused at how, how this is gonna work out. Uh, Jeff Thomas is coming for the addition. Do we address the seating and everything or does Nadia come back and we address that with Nadia?
We're going to be, we have to review the application for amendment to the plaza's site plan and special use permit as though they are expanding this, I'll say for a generic restaurant space expansion. So we're gonna be looking at the number of seats that could be permitted for any restaurant in this expanded space. It's, you know, we're not thinking about it for Nadia because this is, it's just an expansion of this restaurant space. So however many additional seats you can fit with the bar they're showing, you know, the fire table on the deck, the patio. If they're proposing, they want to be able to offer their tenant the ability to have live music here. You know, they need to apply for it as part of their special use permit amendment, the plaza. And then if the plaza has all those approvals in place to build this addition, to offer it for outdoor music, to offer it for an additional, you know, thirty spaces for seat, or however many additional seating, um, expansion for a restaurant, then they can offer that space to their tenant. And the tenant, now being Nadia, assuming she's gonna wanna expand into this space, could then come back to us for an amendment for existing special use permit to allow her to use this additional permitted space.
And, and John, that's.
You know, it's kind of convoluted, but we just couldn't, you know, review Nadia's special use permit for anything other than what's kind of already existing and approved at this site at this time. And obviously she wants to get going and, and she's looking at what she can use the existing subway space as now gets started with takeout and, and, you know, that makes sense. And so, you know, that's what we could do for her at this point was review the existing restaurant space and offer a special use permit for use of that space.
I guess I just, uh, like you said, it's convoluted where, yes, Thomas is going for the addition and the seating and everything, but we know it's gonna be Nadia's restaurant. So I would have thought that Nadia would have to be the one to come in for, uh, any live music or a music venue, not the applicant, uh, Thomas.
I mean, that's, you know, it's, it's gonna be up to the plaza applicant to apply, to represent what this space is going to be used for. And if it, if he wants to be able to offer a tenant the ability to have outdoor music venue, then he needs an approval for that. And it, it makes sense that you make the plaza owner get the approvals for this expansion because we need to look at the site as a whole. We need to look at, is it gonna require more parking spaces? Is he now with this addition needing, um, the maximum impervious coverage for the site? You know, the, you know, the maximum building coverage for the site. I mean, you, now you have to look at the plaza site as a whole when you're talking about this addition. And you can't really put that on the tenant. I mean, you could, but, um, you know, she had the choice to come in and ask for a special use permit to get started right away to use the subway space to start her business. And, and that's what she decided to do and, and that's what we were able to review and approve. Um, you know, if the plaza wants to build this addition and then offer it to the tenant, you know, they need to come in and get the approvals for that. And then we need to look at the plaza site as a whole when looking at that amendment.
Thank you, Allison.
Which, John, you know, that's one of the reasons I, I tried to, you know, make it clear when we made the motion to approve this special use permit, that it was just four phases long for the, what was known as twelve hundred square feet in the form of subway. That, you know, in the future, there's no, no, we didn't mistakenly approve the whole thing, you know? So, okay. Um, does anybody on the board have any other questions for Don at this point? Any, do you have any public?
I have a, I have a question and, Barb, I don't know if Don will know. What is a fire table? I have not a clue.
Oh, I know.
It's simply a table with, uh, a fire down the middle of it. It's a, it's going to be, it'll be natural gas or propane and it's, it's not a big fire. It's just like a little, little flame center in the table. Maybe give off a little heat in late October. Little ambiance.
Okay. Bring your own shrimp and cook it, Barb. Yeah. Now I have questions about that. It, it would seem to be kind of dangerous, wouldn't it?
No, they're fairly good.
No, they're fairly good.
Are they? I don't know, I'd never even heard of one, so.
I belong to that organization, I'll bring you some copies, I'll show you.
You know, if we just opened fire pit with wood, I would certainly, you know, have my doubts. But again, you know, this is pre-concept. I think with some of the things that are presented before us, I think I would want representation from, you know, from BPW, from the fire department, you know, and others aside from all of us. Because, you know, there's a bunch of questions out there, you know, as far as, you know, do they have enough, if, God forbid, there was a fire, do they have enough room between the tracks and the buildings to access in an emergency, whether it be a fire or whoever, whatever else it might be? Simon brought up a good point about the drainage, I think that would like BPW here next time. So, you know, that's why we have a pre-concept hearing, you know, let's get some of these questions out there and let's decide who we need to ask for next time we meet on this, whether we schedule the public hearing now or not. But at least, you know, Don knows what to go backwards to Jeff with. I ought to have an idea of what we need at our next meeting. And, you know, it probably won't be decided in one meeting next time. But that's why we do this.
Deb Dean, if I could loop around to Don's question. I think it's key to find out what the premise was with the special permit initially 17 years ago, related to parking, because that's really the thing to hang your hat on as far as what the assumption was as far as business. Was it based on all assuming the worst case restaurant, worst case whatever? Then you'll know that you're probably at or have plenty of capacity. If it was assuming something else, yeah, then there may be some legwork and some additional parking needed in the back, for example. But I think it is key to find out what the original assumption was. The only other way to do that is to actually look at each of the individual existing facilities and do the math based on state code, which would then tell you exactly what you're required to have with the current tenants. But that, of course, is only current tenants. I think, I think the biggest thing that has to be dealt with besides the setback from the railroad requirements is parking. Because that will affect drainage and affect a lot of things.
Great.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Dean. I think I have all my questions that I have. All right, so I just want to make sure I have what we're taking away from this. Lance and Allison are going to meet, right, regarding the original uses to that site and discuss the site setbacks and that, that all we had?
We think you take the question.
And then, John, we're going to look the board, we're all going to look at the parking overall as it applies to PCC 22D2, and that'll answer Dean's question as well. Is that all we had as a takeaway?
Deb, a question on the, in the bar and dining room. So we are able to make a logical judgment on parking, should they not show if there's going to be any tables or not, and how many?
The new space?
Yes. Shows all the table, the chairs around the bar, it shows the seating out in the new deck and the new patio, but it doesn't show any seating where they say dining. And that should be shown.
Well, the phase one dining, that would be the 30 seats that Nadia represented.
Yeah.
That we've just approved with her special use permit, because that's the existing subway space, the phase one dining there.
So you're saying that there's going to be approximately 25, 16? 15 people in that big space? Okay.
No, she represented, it was going to be 30, right?
John, are you referring to where it says phase two bar slash dining? Is that what you're referring?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I was looking at the phase one dining.
No, that's 16 people sit there, and I'm not worried, I'm looking at the phase two bar and dining. If there's dining, we've got to know how many tables are going to be out there.
I agree with you, John, the, that hasn't been determined yet. They haven't figured that out yet. This is just kind of a sketch plan on some ideas that were thrown around for seating. But they haven't come up with a formal idea yet. Out in front on the deck, that's all just preliminary, they haven't figured that out yet. The fire table might not even be there, it's just an idea.
Is that going to be a restaurant other than Curry Pata, Don?
No, no, the plan is to have this as part of the new restaurant, Curry Pata.
Okay, because that, you know, our code, and I'm sure you know this, she's been here forever, our code doesn't, in the central business district, our code doesn't allow for a bar only.
Right, no, this would be part of the restaurant.
Any other questions by anybody?
If I could just make a comment, you know, we didn't talk about the architecture. You know, if you look at the elevation, the architecture is going to be, it's going to match the existing building, which is pretty, looks pretty nice. The lighting will be very similar to what's there. Cupola over the new addition will be there. So it's all going to blend right in with what the building looks like now.
Will there be any maintenance done to the existing building so that it blends in with the new building? Otherwise, you're going to have new old, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think the intention is to, you know, give the whole place a new, a new facelift.
So the new addition is going to have what I call the Google lights, the purple, the green, whatever those things are there.
Oh, on the pillars? Probably, I'm, I'm not sure, I haven't talked about lighting with Jeff Thomas yet, but I'm, I would make that assumption. But I will find that information out, let me make a note of the lighting.
You know, that's, you know, the lighting as it exists now, I believe is uplighting, you know, if you really want to change that to be downlighting, probably shouldn't have that, but it is right now. But again, you know, once we get the full application, the seeker and all that, you know, light trespass, all that type of lighting will all be.
On the, on the, the special use permit application, there'll be a lighting component, for sure.
We want to, I'm not asking for a motion on this yet, I'm just throwing it out there. Do we want to make a motion to set the public hearing to this now, Don, do you think?
No, we haven't made a formal application yet. You have nothing to set a public hearing on.
Well, I mean, we could set it, we could set a date right now, and you would have to have your application and everything in by.
Yeah, no, I would, I would ask that you hold off on that until the formal application has been submitted. I'm not sure how long, you know, he's, there's a lot of work to be done, you know, to prepare a site plan and address a lot of these questions. So I would ask that, wait till the application comes in.
You know, I didn't know, I didn't want to be us holding you up, so.
Yeah, no, thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, so if there's no other questions, I mean, there's really nothing else, you don't have to make a motion to do anything here, he doesn't want us to set the date right now. So as long as there's no other questions, Don, thank you.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm just going to throw this out. Has there been any thought for doing anything on the south side, like solar panels?
I have not talked about it, but certainly an idea that we could discuss, for sure. I mean, it gets a lot of sun there.
Yeah.
So I'm going to wait to hear back on the, the requirements for parking, because that'll dictate whether or not we need a variance. I'm going to wait to hear back on the setback issue. That'll determine whether or not a variance is going to be needed for that. As far as the other stuff, that's all part of the special use permit review process? And no, just special use permit issues?
I'm not sure what you mean by a variance for parking.
Well, you know, if you, if you break out the individual uses, you may come up with a number that far exceeds what's on the site. And if, if you as a planning board make that determination that we're going to need 75 parking spaces for the existing uses and this proposed addition, then we would need a variance. Or if you apply that section that I pointed out, where you come up with a reasonable number based on the guideline of the uses and this section that allows you to come up with a number that's going to satisfy the needs of parking for the uses, then we may not need a variance.
And that's why I think it's important to go back to, you know, as Dean had raised, go back and look at what the assumptions were originally when the first approval for the plaza was granted. You know, how it was determined that 43 parking spaces was sufficient, the existing commercial spaces that were proposed at that time, and then how those assumptions may be changed with the addition of this, you know, 1,400 square foot addition.
Right, those additions were, those parking spaces were all existing. And it's important to note as well that back then, I believe there was a different zoning law in place. The zoning law we're working with now is relatively new, in the last 10, 12 years.
Yeah, 2009.
Right. So.
Lance, you need to go back to that five inch thick folder.
Oh, yeah, Deb and I were looking at it. It's a good doorstop.
Don, there was some mention about you checking into what's required by the railroad as far as actual setbacks to any buildings? Because if those tracks are at all accurate on the site plan, you're nowhere near 50 feet.
No.
Yeah, I, I think this is, this is.
That may be schematic.
It's schematic, it's, it's not, not a survey, so. But I will check that, I'll, we'll, we'll check with CSX and we'll also, I'll meet with Lance in the field to show him where that property line is, we have to locate that.
Yeah, you're going to check for the pin.
That's right, they're out there.
Well, the caution is, sometimes right of ways go beyond property lines, so, yeah, that's, that's what I'm wondering about.
Especially when it comes to like railroad and.
Yeah. But again, the railroad may be very inaccurately drawn in the plan so far, so.
Sure.
Okay, if no one has anything else, Don, thank you.
Well, I thank you, thank the board for listening to the request and we'll put together an application.
Okay, we'll be in touch about, I'm sure.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Okay. The next thing on the agenda would be to approve the minutes from 10/26/2020. Did anyone get a chance to review that? Any questions?
No.
Did I have a motion to approve the minutes from 10/26/2020?
I'll second.
Don was first.
He was second.
Yep, in favor, no, sorry, I know you got that far.
Dan?
In favor.
Okay. Simon, no, no, nevermind, John.
In favor.
Okay, and I'm in favor. Okay, the only other thing I have.
I'm in favor.
No, no, we have to discuss, and Allison, you know, if you want to leave now, we're just going to discuss, although it could involve you as well, possibly moving our meeting night to Tuesday. I know for some of us, it wasn't an issue. But I, I know certainly for Dan and Steve and, you know, now I've heard Lance, the fourth Tuesday would be an issue. So, go ahead, Barb.
It might be an issue for me, it's not a biggie, but I belong to a group, we play Bunko, which is this mindless game on the fourth Tuesday. Now, I usually host two different months. It, and, but I was thinking maybe we wouldn't have to, we could change it to Tuesdays, because we don't always meet every month. But just, I know, it's, it's petty, but.
No, it's not petty, you know, it, it doesn't matter what it is. It, it, what matters, you know, to me and I think to everybody else, is what works best for everybody. And it certainly seems the majority of the board, Mondays work best for everyone. So I say, let's, let's not rock the boat at this point. If, for some reason in the future, it becomes an issue, certainly with Allison or, you know, anyone else, we can look at it again. But right now, I think for the majority, there's no sense in rocking the boat.
Okay, but does that work for Lance? And who else was it?
It was Lance, Ginger, and, you know, Allison at times could have a conflict. But Lance, and the only reason it doesn't work for Lance and Ginger is because it's not their normal day to work. So when things come in, when it's a hot topic like Stewart, you know, there are times when we're getting things at the last minute, because Ginger didn't work on Monday. So it's, you know, it would be a last minute thing that we get. But those new regulations that we just passed should help that, stating that we have to have things in by a certain date. Lance, Lance has another meeting on Tuesday, he doesn't meet on Mondays, but, you know, Lance, he's there all the time anyway.
And I'll just say for me, you know, I do also represent the Village of Ravina and their planning zoning board meets on that same Monday, the, at the end of the month. But, you know, if there's ever a conflict where I need to attend one or the other meetings, I have associates and, and, you know, people from my office who can, who can cover. So if it's something that, I think it's more important that I attend the Altamont meeting than I would at Altamont meeting, and my associate would go to Ravina. So it's, it's not terribly problematic for me.
Okay, good, thank you, Allison. Okay, so Barb, that answers your questions in the beginning of the meeting. We're going to keep it Mondays, the fourth Monday, every month when needed, which brings me to, I don't know, right now, we have nothing on the agenda, but if.
John, Don Kropse said that he's waiting for us to get back to him on the requirements for parking. Now, should we have a meeting to discuss that? Or after we get the information from Lance as to what the original parking schematic was?
Yeah, you know, I, I think we should just, I mean, I can work with Lance on that and try to determine what the original, I'm trying to remember, I think, we did look at this briefly, and I think it was based on the site, not on individual restaurants or, you know.
Right.
It was in, it was based on the site itself.
I don't know how you can do that when you have restaurants and different businesses.
I think that's the way it was done, it may have been overall square footage. You know, we'll have to look a little bit more into that.
But it doesn't matter what was, we can still, based upon the businesses there, come up with what we feel is required for the parking, do we not?
Absolutely. You know, but we have to start somewhere, and I think.
Right.
Start with what was originally agreed on, and, you know, I know our code, and John, you're a stickler to this, I know our code is usually based on square, overall square footage.
Correct.
So, you know, let's just say it's 2,500 square foot, because 2,500 square foot requires 25 parking spaces, which I believe is what they have in front. So can we say no, you know, you really think if you have overall occupancy? And probably the state code or even the county code.
Well, I can, I can try to help you with that, the, the, New York State Code doesn't dictate, um, doesn't give you required, um, parking spaces per square footage. That is, that's based on every municipality decision. My guess, what we'll find is that they took the entire square footage of the existing building and used the previous code's requirement for business, and I don't know what that was at the time, you know, it was one per two-hundred-and-fifty square feet, plus one for every employee, that tends to be what they say. That may have been the, the very simple basis that was done, now is it adequate? That's up to you, but that may have been the premise at the time. But I think you really do need to know what that was, in order to know how much you wanna depart from that, that'd be my suggestion.
On three fifty-five twenty-two D, which is what Don Cropsy referenced, they do go into one space for two seats, one space per employee, one space for every twenty, uh, so many square foot of standing room. So, it's not just square footage of the building, it, it goes by, uh, the number of seats and the number of employees, so that, uh, th, there's something we can hang our head on more specific than just a square foot of the building.
Possibly now, but what I'm saying, John, is at the time, the assumption may have just-
Oh, yes, I agree, at the time.
Yeah.
The whole building has changed.
Back and, and looking at, looking at originally what, you know, what our code required at the time, what assumptions we made when we approved that initial site plan for the shopping plaza. It's a, it's a, it's just a good place to start, and then to think about, you know, with the addition of this additional space and the additional tables that it's going to add, you know, are we experiencing any existing issues with parking at that facility now? And then with the addition of new, you know, um, square footage and table space, you know, should be, we be requiring additional parking? And then you have to get into, you know, what credits do they get for the municipal parking nearby? And then it kind of, you know, puts them in, you know, we could, under that provision, kind of determine if we think additional parking should be required, and then it's, you know, kind of up to them to evaluate whether they could provide that parking on the spot, or if they want to, you know, pursue, you know, a variance option. Um-
There is, there is room in the back to expand the parking, probably by, and I'm just eyeballing it quickly, five spaces easily, I'm sure they don't want to, and then it gets it some issues about drainage to, to sign.
Right.
But they could very quickly add five spaces, and again, we don't know what the number is that we want.
And, and Don brought up a good point about hours also, um-
Right, right.
Whether or not, obviously during the day that the Taekwondo place or whatever they've been open, um, I don't know what time the, the Chinese restaurant closes, but again, you know, certainly the Chinese place and Prezano's are basically in and out, so those people, you know, they're, they're not going to be there for a couple hours at a time sitting, having dinner. Um, so, you know, a, a lot more has to go into this than saying, well, no, you've got thirty, thirty seats there, so you need five more spaces.
Yeah, and a balancing, you know, it's, it's, it's this kind of idea that, you know, do we want to have them pave additional green space on the site? You know, if we, if we determine, you know, unless we determine additional parking is really needed, you know?
Right. What just happened? Did everybody still see everything?
He accidentally took over control of the view.
It, it was me, I, I didn't do anything, I, I-
No, I'm seeing, Judas Fire Ten took over the screen.
How did she do that?
I don't know.
Who is Judas Fire Ten?
Green.
That's Judy Denine. She just accidentally picked on, uh, controlling the screen, that's my guess.
Yeah, it says, she's shared screen.
Yeah, I see that, but-
Who is Judas Fire Ten's screen?
Judy Denine.
Why does someone else have control of the screen?
I don't know, I didn't do anything, my hands were, I was sitting here leaning on my hands.
It was Julie.
It was Julie, all right.
This is a good time for me to make a motion, isn't it?
I think it's a good time, I have a motion to adjourn, please.
You've got it.
Second it.
I made the motion.
Who made the motion, John?
Yes.
And who seconded?
Dan.
Okay, oh, there we go. They're back, and I, I was lighting, I didn't do anything. Julie cut it out.
That's because Judy, that's because Judy left the meeting.
That was really weird. Uh, okay, so, um, Steve, motion to adjourn.
In favor.
Okay, Dan?
In favor.
Don?
In favor.
In favor.
Okay, and I'm in favor, thank you, everyone.
Good night.
A good night. Thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Good night.